Come in your order. If you have cell phones, please turn them off, they vibrate. It's time to business with the minutes.
I move on.
Aye.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. JD.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Is there a motion?
I would move to accept the memorandum of personal transactions.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. We have the authorization to initiate the hiring process.
I'd move on that.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Good, JD?
Yeah, thank you.
The item is the, uh, who should you grant township trustees?
Uh, move to approve Mark Hunstead and John Walsh to grant township trustees.
Aye.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Item is the, uh, if we J. Byrne Grant, sure, do you have anything you want to? Well, DJ?
Just asking the board to accept it again. Um, I do want to make note though that there is rumor that they're looking to cut, um, that grant by forty to forty-five percent. I'm not sure which particular line item, um, but that's the percentage that's been thrown out for this, this group.
It's been cut every year for last three, four.
Been rolling it down a little bit, but a little bit for this business that could be cut if they do that four, forty to forty-five percent.
I'd move the chairman to be authorized to sign.
Aye. Uh, CJ, how much is up the chute?
Um, I don't know the full percentage, but as far as our particular, um, budget, I think, is still fucking roughly seventy-five percent of our current total compensation.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Is Mr. Carlson here?
Not yet. Yeah, no. Is he here now? Oh, there he is.
There he is.
I didn't even show up. I didn't know much was going to happen.
I hate to spoil your routine.
It's terrible.
Uh, what we have here is resolution pending commending Bradley Carlson for his service in Woodbury County. Whereas Bradley Carlson has capable served Woodbury County as an employee of the Woodbury County Sheriff's Office for thirty-six years, from September one nineteen seventy-seven to March twenty-ninth, two thousand thirteen. Whereas the service given by Bradley Carlson as a Woodbury County employee has been characterized by his dedication to the best interest of the citizens of Woodbury County, and now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Woodbury County that the undersigned members of this board thanks and commends Bradley Carlson for his years of service to Woodbury County, and be it further resolved, that is a wish of all those signing below, that the future hold only the best for this very deserving person, Bradley Carlson. Be it so resolved this fifth day of March, two thousand thirteen. I didn't know that you were taking the chair.
He does it once in a while.
Bradley, it's been a real pleasure.
Congratulations.
Michelle.
I have a agreement between Woodbury County and the Statology Research to bring Lieutenant Colonel Dave Grossman to our region. He has two presentations, one is on July thirtieth and the other on July thirty-first in Storm Lake. Um, he's gonna present a whole day presentation of state schools and healthy students and bulletproof minds. The first day will be to educators and school administrators, and the second day will be to law enforcement personnel. So there are three distinctly different presentations based on the audience. So I, um, request permission to contract with this group so that he can come and do presentations to about hopefully three to five hundred individuals in each group.
Second. This one comes from Lee?
This is all grand, yes, this is in, um, our grand plan.
It's a very nice seat. I'm not close to it.
It is, and it's. He is very worthwhile, he's renowned nationally, he's, um, he's been in several court cases within terrorism, and he's very well respected in the law enforcement community, and I think people in, in schools have seen some of his presentations as well. So he's a good asset to help to prepare for events that potentially happen.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries.
Thank you, I'll bring signature to order.
The next item is time set.
Want to just sign it, we'll watch him, right?
We can skip to Mr. Mayor, Mark?
Well, we can only do a couple of mine too, because I have a couple of time set issues as well, but we can either do a utility permit. Uh, first item is a, uh, utility permit for Century Link. Uh, they've been working in this area on the southeast side of Sioux City, uh, with installing some fiber optic cable. Uh, this one is along, um, Southern Hills Drive, but it attached into us on Old Lake Port Road. I recommend approval.
Move it.
Okay.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries.
Uh, the second item I have is consideration of approval of our bridge inspection contract for two thousand thirteen. Uh, this would again be a bit for Counting Burns and Associates.
I'd move on.
Price actually came down a little bit this year.
Good.
We've gone through our cycle of, uh, bridges requiring additional scour analysis and working to the biggest end of the structural analysis and the new structure requirements as well.
Move on to the side.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. The rest of yours are set time as well?
That's correct.
Pass it to Larry.
Well, we just never know what time to set, or how fast, or what other agenda we're going to have moving, so.
Well?
It's kind of a shot in the dark.
Who's got what to do in the order while we're waiting?
Well, we are getting ready for our first bridge attack of the year, uh, late this week. We're gonna have some temperatures in the sixties, so our two-hundred-and-eighty street bridge is ready to go. They're having three, four feet on today. This will go us to an early spring finish. Um, in two weeks, we're looking at, uh, the, uh, county program being the board for approval. We added fourteen bridges. We've actually shuffled lineup on one because we had enough money left over from those two culvert proposals to bring one more culvert ahead this year, and maybe see if we can't get favorable prices on it as well. That'll be part of our late budget, and, uh, it, it's, it's, uh, nice when we get favorable bids like we did earlier this year. Uh, nowhere yet on concrete projects are going to be going. Um, we, uh, waiting for the DOT to send the contracts back signed to us, which we have to wait for before we can contact the contractor and begin to have, uh, hard reconstruction to use on the project. Um, one item that, uh, we sent memo along to board on, it'll be set up for discussion next week, and I just wanted to bring it for you, so we have some, you have a chance to give it some thought. Um, our permits have now come through on the Sioux River Bank project.
And what project is that?
This is putting rip rap on the bank down by, uh, the halls. Um, he called, uh, yesterday, he's back in Texas now, and, uh, so his timing is good. We just got the permit a month, week and a half ago. Uh, I want to get past the budget hearings before we run that before we, uh, that was a project where the landlord was looking at committing thirty thousand dollars toward about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. Um, prior to that meeting, I will try and have all the information on what's available to levy against that, uh, Smithland Ben McDonald, uh, protection area. Uh, I don't think Smithland is, just covers the other bank, which would be the, the right bank that are the basis downstream. Uh, I gotta see where the Ben McDonald area is and determine which properties we begin, how much we can assess those, but, uh, it, it isn't something where I think we can put the whole project cost in here in one year. That would be a fairly substantial project with the estimate.
So you think the drainage district, I mean, they're gonna pick up part of the cost?
Well, I think the drainage district can, and I've been asked to look at that by the chair to see if, uh, it would be appropriate and how much we could, uh, get out of that area.
How, how many landowners are we talking about?
Maybe four.
Four?
Well, there's a couple across the road too, um, folks along the quarry there. The problem is then they're going to want their site done as well, to, to lies to the, uh, northwest, or northeast of the bridge. We looked at that bank during our tour last fall.
Yep, yep, it'd be cut out.
It, it's, it's badly cut out.
Yeah, it's huge.
That project is getting closer to two hundred thousand by the time we get all the dirt and get some rip rap along there. It's a lot of money, bad program, folks.
There he is.
That's, that's where my worry lies. I'm up under ten fifteen, I think.
Uh, it's ten fifteen, we have a public hearing sale property, parcel number two-two-four-nine-four-oh, it's twenty-four oh eight West Fifth Street. This is just the public hearing part.
If it don't want to be heard, I'd move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Now they'll sell the property at twenty-four oh eight West Fifth Street. Is there anyone here to bid on that? You want to step right up to the microphone? Give your name.
Thanks to Borlaquino, do you hear?
Okay, and your bid price?
One dollar.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Hearing ordered, I move.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. That lady right there, I'll take your money.
You got a buck?
I have the, uh, lifting of tax suspension for SM.
Move it, second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Discussion and action on contribution to the Sioux Land Initiative. Is there anyone, uh, Danny, do you want to lead the discussion?
Chris, I got ahold of Chris, and he was tied up today with his R O G Thursday.
IRGC.
And he was tied up this morning, he was gonna try to make it, but he couldn't make it. So, or refusing that, he didn't really request anything. He really didn't request anything, but it's been, looking back on history, we've gone anywhere from zero to fifteen thousand, and with the situations we're in currently, with economic development, trying to get everybody together, it's been recommended that we contribute ten thousand.
I would move that.
Aye.
Where, where does the funds come?
Funds will come from local cost and sales tax. That's where we paid it in the past.
Discussion.
Just, I think this is a good, uh, investment, you know, for the county, because we, you know, this is not initiative, but really been, uh, important to us, particularly in, uh, our getting, uh, CF Industries here. Uh, they work with us, uh, as you guys know, uh, uh, weeks and hours on end, on weekends and Sundays and whatever, you know, to get the job done there, and they've worked with us on other projects. We, uh, still want to remain fairly aggressive in our, uh, ability to bring jobs to Woodbury County, and I think it's a, I think it's a real good investment for us.
Anybody else?
I agree.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries.
Thank you.
Was Mark coming up? Yes.
Yes, that's you.
We have another five minutes to kill for set time. Mr. Mayor?
I, I just had a couple of pictures, I was going to see if she could, uh, if we could plug that in and hold on.
I believe I could fill in a little bit, I didn't hear it, but this morning from six to eight, we had a couple, um, members of the Conservation Board and on Kaywood, talking about nature and maybe the opportunities. Did you hear them, or they good?
They were very, very good.
Who was it?
It was, uh, Don Snyder, and I don't know who the other person.
I think was Greg Gruppa gonna be on it too?
Greg Gruppa was there, and, uh, it was just really, really nice. Greg Gruppa offered his, uh, as an incentive for, uh, people to call in, they, uh, if they'd contribute two hundred and fifty dollars, he would, uh, for six couples, he'd have a specially been out of this place in Nebraska.
Really?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, he's just quite generous, isn't he?
And it's just, uh, it was just a really good thing, and, uh, it was very well done this morning. I wake up in Kaywood every morning.
Are they raising money?
Yeah.
Is that what the purpose was? I just happened to see it on Facebook, um...
This is about their fourth or fifth, I think they did it all last week.
Oh, really? Oh, okay.
Tim Matiro on, uh, yesterday afternoon. Tim Matiro? He talks so much, I can't remember.
I might have five minutes. You want to say anything about the, uh, for the heart rock?
No. There'll be enough said today.
How many people?
Have they just been in the day here, Mark?
Missional.
Why don't you go ahead? Uh, I went to the school board meeting last night. I have to keep on there. I stopped at the school board meeting last night to, just to give them update of what, uh, I've been working on, when we talked about, uh, using vote centers in the upcoming three elections. And what I've been working on is, uh, moving, uh, where I can, polling places from schools to, uh, churches. They actually made better polling places, and, uh, just from reading articles and the meetings that I've been attending nationwide, is the trend is to move polling places out of schools, and that's what, uh, I talked to the school board last night about, was to, uh, that I no longer intend on using, uh, schools as polling places if students are in the school. So, uh, I've talked to some, uh, four different churches, I've set up meetings to go talk with them about using those as polling places. But I've also asked the school board to consider, and I'm gonna write a formal letter to, uh, Dr. Gosman, asking him to cooperate, uh, in the general, during the general election, uh, because this has been lost in the community discussion, it's that, uh, the only time we're talking about using vote centers that we can is during municipal and school elections. We can't do it during the general election. During the general election, we're required to be open at, uh, have all the polling places open. And, uh, so what I've asked them to do is just once every two years, is to schedule something so that, uh, students won't be in those schools during, uh, the federal election, during the general election, so that we won't have, uh, the problems with, uh, traffic, and it's a security issue. So, uh, sound like a pretty favorable, uh, response from them.
Are you, you get a lot of confusion when you start switching polling places?
Uh, that's a concern, but we're gonna try to make a, a good effort of, uh, advising people, you know, what it is, and, uh, I also told them that we're trying to, we're gonna try to have fourteen, uh, vote centers open. That's my goal, have at least fourteen vote centers open during those, uh, three elections.
Thank you. Mark, let's go ahead with the, uh, road vacation. Portion of Stoddard Avenue.
I think the aerials, which gives us the, uh, most clear view of this. Um, we had a property owner who is getting ready to, uh, uh, sell property, uh, who, their realtor contacted us on their path about, uh, vacating a portion of Stoddard Avenue, which is the road where you can do where the hand is here. Uh, these three lots are owned by, uh, Miller, the contract buyer is, uh, Kilburn, and the lots currently are split by the road. You can see there's a garage that's been here for a very long time as part of the, uh, Kilburn-Miller property. In reviewing the road vacation, we have, uh, a good number of roads and streets back here that have been planted, and as you can see, have never been taken into the road system. This is a screenshot from our GIS this time. Um, we, uh, we have, we have made an adjustment in the, uh, description for the quit lane deeds, because there's two different editions of, uh, Morningside that we're having to deal with here, the third edition, or third filing being here in North Park, I guess this would be, yeah, this would be North Park. And then the, uh, second filing, which splits along the, uh, property line between, uh, Miller-Kilburn and, uh, Julia Culver, who has the southern part. Uh, the vacation deals with vacating this alley that lies in block twenty-nine, that you can see here, and then vacating all of Stoddard Avenue between what's now Garrettson Avenue, which originally planted as Ivy, all the way down here to Lion Street. So everything between these lots on Stoddard and this alley here are what we're vacating. Uh, we've published it in the paper, um, we, we've also sent, uh, notices out to all of the property owners, not just those that are on either side of Stoddard, which is the state code requirement, or instructed me at that time to also reach out further to other folks who own within this subdivision. Uh, this was originally planted, I believe, in eighteen ninety-eight, and then it was deannexed from the city before being developed. Uh, if you look at the, uh, the city limits on the GIS, you can see that it's a very jagged, uh, city limits that are here, and, and they pretty much threw this area into wolves, and, uh, we have had some other vacations out here in the past, Port DeCader's been vacated, um, but it's been very piecemeal, and I think what we, what the county board has tried to do in the past is dealt with those areas that, uh, had a real estate transaction pending and were the, uh, planning the streets of constant problem for a particular property owner regarding that.
Now, you're talking about vacating all of Stoddard?
All of Stoddard, yes.
And is that going to limit, uh, marketability of these lots?
Well, the, if you look at, uh, all of the land here in Stoddard, or in Morningside Second, uh, belongs to, uh, Julia Culver, south of lot six. Everything north of this line here that you see, lot one through six, and thirty-three through thirty-eight is the portion owned by Miller, and they own thirty-three through thirty-eight on this side of Stoddard as well. Um, our county road department has no intention of opening a street on Stoddard. This has been requested to allow the sale of the, uh, Miller-Kilburn property as a single, uh, a single parcel. Uh, that's their intention is to, uh, file for a quit lane, or, once they have quit lane deed to acquire title, and then be able to, uh, market that as an entire acreage. We, we, we haven't received any calls, we have, well, we did receive one call to question. Um, they were just wanting to know which portion of, of Stoddard is being done, and no objections. I can't remember who the call was from, I didn't, I wrote it down in the office, but I forgot to bring that with me. They weren't objecting to the portion.
We got a manager once, did we?
Thank you. Where did the owner come in? Like, you know.
Sure.
We need your name, Bruce.
Yes, David Booth, I live at nineteen hundred DeCader. That's a great position I am in. Okay, regarding the county resolution for the, uh, vacation Stoddard, I object to the proposed vacation, road right away, you know, dedicate to the county, because it would adversely affect my property value and city legal access to my developed property, developed property. Blocks thirty-four and thirty-five in Morningside Edition, second file, are my occupied homestead, and it's located immediately south of Vine Avenue. Stoddard and Wells, off of Garrettson, are the only planted or dedicated access to my property in section four. The current access to my property in section four is over private property of the city with a right of passage privilege. The city owns forty-foot wide lots, now referenced as Orleans Avenue, for access to the railhead. Wells Avenue and the south end of Stoddard Avenue are inaccessible as safe all-weather road access due to elevation extremes. The approximate elevation difference from Garrettson to Vine, to Vine, is ten feet and approximately eight hundred foot of distance, while the approximate elevation distance from Morningside Avenue to Stoddard is sixty feet and approximately three hundred foot distance. Stoddard Avenue extending south off Garrettson Avenue is the only relative safe all-weather access to my property in section four that does not have steep grades. Morningside Edition Second filing was surveyed and planted by city engineer J. M. Lewis as an addition to Sioux City, and that was reported April three eighteen ninety-one and approved by the city. My father purchased blocks thirty-four to forty-three in nineteen fif- nineteen fifty-one, which included the Stoddard Avenue access rights, which I have been trying to assert since nineteen ninety-one, and most of you are aware of my efforts in the past. Vacation of Stoddard deprived me of an asset of purchased property value which most reasonable, uh, persons would recognize. A realtor aiming, Kiketsec, I guess, did a comparative market, market analysis of blocks thirty-four and thirty-five, and reported the value range of twenty-two thousand to forty-one thousand per acre with the viable safe Stoddard access. City future land used in the East Gate Development Plan is for residential lots south off Garrettson on Stoddard as an infill option of residential development. on Stoddard as an infill option of residential development. If Stoddard Avenue, the only safe viable access is vacated, I respect full significant damages in the amount of fifty hundred thousand to four hundred dollars. If Stoddard is vacated, it is my opinion that the owner of lots eighteen and nineteen, block thirty, Morningside Second, at the corner of Vine and Wells, would be in the same situation if they would not have a safe viable access to their property if they decided they want to do something with it. Access to any property is very important as evidenced by the South Bridge-Lively Park interchange controversy and to each of our own private properties. All owners of property affected by the Stoddard flag knew and accepted the condition at the time of the purchase. Therefore, I respectfully request the Woodbury County Board of Supervision to not approve proposed vacation of Stoddard Avenue. And I could go through a whole listing of my efforts over the years since ninety-two in trying to open that and use that as access. And obviously, I don't have the knowledge that was necessary to get the job done, but I'm still interested. Thank you, John.
Can I ask a question? Just, oh, do you, you wanted all the way from Garrettson all the way south, so if, or isn't portion that Millers and Kilburns have requested, not an issue with you?
Well, it did because that's the only access, I mean, that otherwise it has steep grades that is not all-weather type access.
Just for clarification purposes, what I was referring to is this chunk here, and you feel this is needed all the way down from Garrettson?
That's what I've been trying to get open, that's what I've been trying to get open for access since nineteen ninety-two. And after, over the years, Mr. Gosman gave some very good suggestions, one was to vacate the east forty feet and not use the west twenty feet for access. And he had some other suggestions too over the years, and whenever I would talk to Mr. Miller about it, Mr. Miller told me that his only, his only solution was if I would not object to vacation. He would never discuss any, any actually accommodation that I could make to be in there.
So that would landlock your...
It wouldn't necessarily landlock, it would still come off Morningside Avenue, but the steep grades as such that it wouldn't be usable like, you know, a safe man. It's about sixty-foot elevation from Morningside Avenue up to the, to the block seventeen.
Now, is this your home site, correct?
Yes, block thirty, yeah, the west side of block thirty-five where my house is.
This is, this is...
No, that blocks from my house. And he plans to build there, I think, so many plans to build there.
And this, this entire area is yours as well?
Yes.
Do you have more property continuing this way?
Yes, some of that.
This here?
I have blocks thirty-four through forty-three.
And accessing them off of Orleans is not feasible?
Well, that is my only access now, and that's not dedicated or planned. Maybe this would clarify my little point, okay? I own thirty-four to forty-three. Morningside Third, Morningside Second, and we said more than that here, I've been vacated, that's where the interchange is.
My recommendation would be at very least to be tabled and allow us to do some additional study to it.
About the alley, can we do that?
Do you have objections in the alley?
No, I had no objections on the alley, I'd say, because the alley has the same grave problems that the, that the rest of my property would have.
Is the alley, is that where the garage is sitting?
No, no, the garage is sitting on Stoddard. The alley is over here, but it would join this portion of the person.
Is that a separate, a separate document, separate action?
I resolve this that is one action.
I'd rather table the whole thing until we get additional information on it.
I second that. You know, years ago, when, when Kane Market being built, the contractors cut about thirty feet off the top of that hill. It used to be thirty feet higher. And so there is kind of a relatively flat area there where they had to remove the dirt. And, and actually, just a few years ago, Triple D Contracting wanted to take more dirt off of there, and I had to come to the board because Mr. Yule said he would, he would sue if they took, took dirt off the common road. He wanted Morningside Avenue extended into his property. And at any rate, that, that didn't happen because he needed, he needed to have the dirt right away, and I think Mr. Gosman was able to, you know, to help him get dirt someplace else.
I remember I told you a month or so ago... Yeah, that there were a lot of problems, yeah.
That, that whole area out there is just a claim, I mean, it's just...
It's well described.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, even Sixth Street to the south end of my property, the, the, the road is twenty-foot off center, where there's still the, the, the north side of the actual gravel road is the north limit of the planted, planted street.
And, and is that our problems?
No, actually, according to the county assessor, when I talked to her years ago, she said that's private property.
It is, yeah.
It's like Decatur.
Yeah, Decatur.
No, they got it, listen, actually, there's only about a hundred and fifty feet of Decatur actually still, right about where you're at.
Right, right about in here is actually the only thing that's...
There's only about a hundred and fifty feet that is actually still...
It is so narrow.
...in place, yeah. It really is.
Well, I'd suggest, Mark, if you go out there and look at this, get to Mr. Booth.
Sure.
There's some accommodations we can make. I don't wanna build a road out of there.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm not looking to build a road out there either. If that is to be developed, I think the...
Well, the, the city had developed the plans for it, I mean, their, their East Gate, and they have it all shown on their conceptual drawings as the residential were infilled to...
They did that third year or more ago, and then they, yeah, four years ago.
They, they keep...
And we sent the city a notice as well, and we received no comments from them, so...
They don't wanna annex it back, otherwise we wouldn't be in this.
Yeah, they would.
Well, they, they, we are, they were gonna shut off everybody's water out there, and they, they had everybody that, in order to continue to have water, had to sign an agreement that when the city wanted, they would annex, and we wouldn't object. And rather than putting in a well, we, those, those portions, I mean, I, you know, but at any rate...
We also have a right way down here, but I think that would serve as well for access to your...
That would be, that would be more inside Avenue if you extend it.
More inside Avenue.
But it's got about sixty-feet elevation differential, three hundred feet.
From here to...
Okay, where are your arrows?
Right. Now, we have a set time for culvert bids.
Well, we have a motion to table in a second.
All those, okay, motion carries. Set time to receive and consider bids for the twenty thirteen Oregon Metal Pipe Ours.
The first quote we have is from True Steel North of St. Paul, Minnesota.
Did you have an estimate, Mark, on that?
Um, no, I did not have an estimate on this. True Steel North, the total bid was eighty-four thousand, sixty-seven ninety. Our next bid is from Midwest Service and Sales Company of Shiler, Nebraska. Their total bid is ninety-two thousand, one hundred fifteen dollars and forty-two cents. Nine-two, one-one-five, forty-two. This was difficult to estimate because we've heard about steel price increases, and I, I don't think we can use last year necessarily as a reference. Depending on which company we were talking to. Our next bid is from Contact Iowa City, Iowa. Their total bid is forty-eight thousand, five hundred eighty-three dollars and sixty-four cents. Four-eight, five-eight, three, sixty-four. This is why...
They missed something?
Uh, no, this is actually pretty close to what our prices would have been. Last year, our prices would have given us about forty-five thousand dollars for this bid, so, I mean, they're very close to the same price that we were offering Culver down last year. But we have heard a lot of rumors about steel prices being increased.
I haven't shitting on a lot.
Yowla Culver and Supply of Lomore, Iowa is next.
What was the name of that company?
Yowla, I, L, O, W, A. They serve Illinois and Iowa. Seventy-two thousand, two hundred eighty-four dollars. Seven-two, two-eight-four. Our next bid is from Midwestern Culver Limited. Their bid is fifty-one thousand, one hundred sixty-three dollars and ninety cents. Five-one, one-six-three, ninety. And our final bid is from Metal Culverts Incorporated of Jefferson City, Missouri. Their bid is fifty-four thousand, nine hundred twenty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents. Five-four, nine-two, nine, fifty-two. We'd like an opportunity to review these, make sure that they have quoted the property type, that it's riveted, not spiral. Sometimes you can see that cost differential. But again, that, the, the low quote is very near what our last year's price was.
I believe that the bids refer to the county engineer for a recommendation.
Go ahead. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Most, most carries?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver.
A new chiller to be accepted for the Trosper Hoyt building, and also a new boiler for the Trosper Hoyt building. I believe you guys have the bids in hand, or...
Those in your packet, was it?
It could have been your packet.
From train and...
Yes, very plain, plain boiler.
Yep.
Carrier, carrier and train, both.
Yep, for the chiller. And these are being paid out of our capital loan to get after our fifth count set aside, and then the other pressure for here. Right there.
I think I've got it here. Train is the boiler, or...
Boiler be, yeah, plane's boiler service.
Or plane, okay. I look to far ahead.
Mark, what was the bidding process that you used for these?
Uh, I had two bids on the chiller because it was over a hundred thousand, and on the boiler at thirty-nine, almost forty thousand, I wasn't requested to go out for bid.
That was under a hundred thousand.
Right, the one that was over a hundred, did you publish that notice or...
No, I didn't, no, I didn't.
He does have two bids, they are of timeframe, but if he's done before June thirtieth.
And I went with the two companies that are standard leader, training carrier, I wouldn't, wouldn't think I'd have needed any more on that.
I'd have to double check, but my, my concern is that they would need to be published.
Is a hundred thousand, that was about two years ago, is that going up to a hundred and twenty-five?
It's a hundred and thirty now.
Okay, then we're under it, so we shouldn't have to. If they're under the threshold, we don't have to go out for bids, we can go right to one person if we want. So that question did come up when you had issued a pending on that, if we had to get bids or not?
Right.
So it's a hundred and thirty, we're under that.
So the hundred and seventy thousand dollar figure is for both items?
No.
I saw somewhere in the packet.
A hundred and seventy is for the chiller, and the hundred and sixteen, I believe, a hundred and sixteen is for the chiller. So you'd have a bid under the hundred and thirty thousand, yes.
What was your estimated cost prior to bidding?
Uh, I estimated around forty thousand on the boiler, and I estimated about a hundred and fifteen to twenty on the chiller.
And the boiler is thirty-nine, six. I would move to accept that.
Second. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Now we have the chiller. You have a price on that, Mark?
Uh, I, I decided to go with train. Yes, yes, it is a hundred and ninety-five. I wanted to buy a warranty with it.
That's an additional two thousand.
Additional two thousand, eight hundred, yes. And that's for the second through fifth year, it covers it for five years, warranty does.
Second. Discussion.
They're underneath the threshold, so it's all right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Oliver.
Good morning.
Couple of years ago, you asked Mr. Pellerzell and I to develop a policy that would govern the use of property purchased with taxpayer money for matters unrelated to county business. J.D. and I did that, and I'm not sure when the last time is, anyone might have looked at it, so I brought copies. J D and I did that, and I'm not sure when the last time is, anyone might have looked at it, so I brought copies. Couple of weeks ago, Sheriff Drew asked me to meet with he and Mr. Clausen to discuss this policy and some concerns that the sheriff has about how it affects the ability of deputies employed in the sheriff's department to perform off-duty activities. We, uh, met probably a couple of weeks ago and, uh, had, uh, what I think was an interesting and positive discussion about the sheriff's concerns, um, and it caused me to think back to the reasons why you tasked me with drafting this policy in the first place. I recall the board's two principal concerns at that point were, uh, preservation of the useful life of the equipment that's purchased with taxpayer money and a concern for enhanced exposure if, uh, these controls, meaning the things in this policy, weren't in place. The sheriff explained that, uh, while he has no disagreement with the policy in general, as it relates to deputies, uh, the very purpose for, uh, the requests they get for off-duty work is to, uh, present the image of law enforcement which, uh, serves the requesters' need to make certain that people understand that, uh, law enforcement is on the premises. We visited, um, about the, uh, the rationale for the policy in the first place. We talked about, uh, whether, uh, using cars in particular and uniforms in general, uh, has any adverse impact on the useful life of that county property. I don't think we have any evidence, anecdotal or otherwise, that, uh, um, doing off-duty work without cars or uniforms. Uh, the real issue, is it related to law enforcement, is, uh, enhanced exposure liability. What I would tell you after our discussion, uh, a couple of weeks ago, is that as it relates to this off-duty work, I think the initial concerns about increased exposure to liability are overstated. The reason for that is fairly simple. Working as off-duty security, uh, these folks have no real authority to do anything that gets you in trouble. It's only when there is an incident and they respond to that incident, uh, by doing what they need to control it, typically leaving in some of the rest, that, uh, you get into issues of increased liability. What I don't think anyone recognized at the time is that the security people can't arrest anybody anyway. And so what you have is a situation where if one of Dave's people is there acting as, uh, off-duty security and a situation develops where, uh, an arrest has to be made, they can only do that, um, exercising their authority as a police officer. And the moment they do that, they're yours anyway. And so there is no increased liability from that standpoint. The, uh, the other side of that coin, and, uh, one that, uh, either the sheriff or Major Spalman may want to speak to, is, uh, from their perspective, being there in uniform makes it less likely that there will be an incident, instead of more likely. Instead of having one of the three people that are typically working at night respond to the nine-one-one call, um, after things have gotten out of control, you have a situation where you have someone there in uniform. And I can't argue necessarily with the notion that, uh, it's one thing to live off the security guard at a ballgame, it's quite another to, uh, misbehave in the presence of a deputy who's in uniform, who clearly, uh, is clothed with the authority to, uh, take care of the incident. And so, uh, law enforcement would argue that liability is actually less likely if, uh, they're able to, uh, appear in uniform than if they have to respond to a situation that more often than not will be out of control by the time they get there. With those things in mind, um, Mr. Clausen and Sheriff Drew asked me to come this morning and talk to you about the wisdom of rewriting this policy to allow for, um, deputies to work off-duty in uniform and, uh, driving the cars. One other thing that they pointed out to me, and, uh, I'll pass around a copy of this as well, is that, uh, chapter sixty-eight B of the code, uh, actually addresses this issue in the context of a conflict of interest. And essentially what it says is that, uh, you can't use county equipment for your own benefit. But then if you look at the highlighted portion, it says unless you're a police officer. There's nothing in the legislative history that tells me directly why the legislature saw fit to carve out that exception. But I don't think it's a stretch to come to the conclusion that it's for the very reasons that the sheriff points out. The sheriff, uh, is interested in, uh, what he has referred to as, uh, community policing. He's talked about it for a number of months now. Part of that, uh, from his perspective, is having the freedom to place off-duty deputies in uniform at events like Saturday in the park, um, summer festivals in communities and, uh, athletic events. Particularly in a situation where we know there is a history of the tension between two schools. It serves two purposes. One, it gives him the opportunity to get his people out of their, uh, communities where they can be seen. And two, uh, it addresses the deterrent issue that I've already talked about. It's his belief that doing that, uh, without the opportunity to have these people in uniform doesn't serve him one of those purposes. It all also goes hand in hand with the, uh, dialogue that I know is continuing with various communities, uh, who are at the end of entering twenty-eighty agreements to provide impact law enforcement. If you set all of that aside and ask the question, so how would we do this if we were going to do it? Um, I've heard any number of suggestions. I've heard, uh, do it like the city police department does and run it through the union. Put it on the sheriff's desk and have him or his deputy doing it. And send these people out while they're actually on duty and, uh, the going rate would be their overtime rate. Uh, and so I think there is, there's many ways to accomplish this as, uh, one's imagination would permit. I don't know that I'm in a position to suggest to you, uh, uh, which one is best, and frankly, I haven't been asking. I think the sheriff would like to speak to that. At this point, I, I think I've explained everything that Mr. Clausen, Sheriff Drew and I discussed a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, would be interested in any questions that anybody has.
I was here last time, um, when we adopted the policy. And I thought this was all vetted. I mean, I thought we had, um, legal opinion at that time that for liability reasons, it was not a good idea to use, represent yourself as a county official when you're not necessarily doing county business. So this is just a little surprising that it comes back a couple of years later with a different legal opinion.
I have a different legal opinion.
Well, then who drafted it and how did we get to it before? That was my understanding, that it was driven by legal opinion and maybe insurance, J D.
I drafted the policy. It was in response to concerns about liability, all of which are real. I'm not here to tell you that they aren't. But I think the sheriff's point is a good one.
But he had this point last time, I mean, we heard this last time, we had people come, people were angry that we had changed the policy. We held tight, we, we weathered it, we moved to a new era, and now we're back at it again. I, I don't know, I'm just trying to...
You're right.
Um, come to the, um, understanding of, of the turn of events here, I guess, or the, the turn of thought on it.
I'm going to speak for the sheriff because he's anxiously waiting to get me out of the way. What I will tell you is that, uh, I think there's a different philosophy than there has been, uh, in the past about the importance of putting, uh, uniforms out in the county.
Oh, I heard this last time. I mean, we heard a lot of the same concerns. I mean, we had people come to our board meeting and say, oh, you, you know, they were tavern owners. And they said, please, I need to have the deputies there, um, to protect, you know, my fights or my, my parking lots and, uh...
Something I should, I didn't say that I should have said is that I don't think the sheriff had any intention of putting police officers in taverns. He was talking about community events.
Okay, but, but we did hear all those arguments. I mean, so it isn't like all of a sudden now it's a new argument, it's the same. In my opinion, it sounds a lot the same last time.
All right, and let me explain the reason this report bore because we had meeting Dave, uh...
Major Spalman, Major Wick.
And I said this wasn't a decision the chairman would make. I agree with some of the stuff Doug says, I disagree with him on others, but he's got the shingle light on. Might have thought it too, I'm not positive about that. So, anyway, I don't think we could air this. We're going to have a board decide, and that's, then it's up to the sheriff for after.
How's it working now, would you... Since that time, there was a, it, it changed. The practice was different the last couple of years, so we've, and I'm not sure if I understand now exactly how the off-duty work...
Well, I appreciate it. Let me first, uh, thank, uh, Doug, I'm going to try not to botch up his eloquence speech. And I, I appreciate Larry's time to meet with us and, and go over this and, and to bring to the board, okay? Uh, you, you bring up questions I'm sure that were brought up a couple of years ago. And this isn't to be wise or facetious or funny, but there's a new sheriff in town. So he has a different philosophy. And my philosophy is community policing. Now where I want to get into just a little bit is I want to talk about the extra duty thing that we're talking about. We have large events that need our assistance. We even have a large construction project that's coming up that we're all aware of, that we have been contacted. And they would like our help from, from dusk to dawn. Because they don't have, they want to make sure that that integrity of that area is protected. I don't have the staff to assign people. This gentleman here, and you all agree, we don't have the overtime for that. Even if they paid it, it would be a contractual and managerial nightmare for the sheriff, his administration, to try to work through contracts of how many hours these deputies work. And Mr. Gill's office, Jean would be pulling her hair out, trying to figure out how everything goes. It is best, I've checked with law enforcement throughout the Midwest, the police department. They do it, Chief Young approves anything that is, uh, authorized or anything that goes on off-duty. He approves it, then the union works it, the city wants to stay out of it. What they do is they pay the union, the union secretary pays those people. I checked with Mike Van Outover, the sheriff in Plymouth County. Mike told me that he doesn't have the overtime either. And what he does is if the, if the community of Hinton needs a deputy to work a ballgame, he can't afford to pay him. So what he does is he allows the, uh, Hinton Community School District to pay that deputy, and he is there to provide a service. And if the de, if the sheriff needs him, he will leave. There's that caveat that I have to leave because my main function is this. But for the most time, he's there as a presence. And what's happened, and just so you know, a couple of events that we've had where we've had no extra duty work. Uh, recently at a ballgame, uh, one of the referees, wasn't me, kicked out an individual. Tried to kick out that individual, he wasn't going to leave. Fortunately, there was a deputy that was in the crowd not working. But realized, you know, I don't come to work at eight that next morning, my job is now whenever suns. So he had to go over there, identify himself and remove that individual. Those are some of the things that could have been quelled by having that presence there. I'll guarantee you, if the official would have went over to the school administrator and said, this subject needs to be removed, the school administrator would have contacted the deputy, and there wouldn't have been a problem, they would have left. So those are some of the concerns. Uh, it is a managerial nightmare to try to contract with, for me, I have, you know, we, we went to a two oh seven K contract with the deputies, six days on, three days off, nine-hour days. Now if I try to move somebody, I have the union, I have to give them ten-day notice, I have to do all those things. So part of my community policing is, here's the most advantageous way for the community to take advantage of us without, uh, a large dollar amount, is that they set a rate. For example, I think, uh, Woodbury Central contacted us during sometimes a, a little heated rivalry between Lawton Bronson and Woodbury Central, or Lawton contacted us also, they wanted a deputy. Made sense to me. I don't have the budget to tell that guy to go there for five hours and pay him forty-one dollars an hour when the school is willing to pay twenty-eight bucks an hour and he can go there. Yet I can still have my deputies out on patrol, not, uh, circumventing the, the county coverage, but have that guy as an extra party. It's not to derive a benefit, it's to derive safety in the community. It's to keep us from having issues. And I, I'm somewhat nervous, uh, but you tell me, Mr. Phillips, if I need to stop, but I'm going to tell you that, uh, there was an incident that, there was a lawsuit. And, uh, it happened in Sloan. My personal belief down there is if they would have contracted with a deputy at the Sloan Golf Course, that incident might have not blown out to that large event.
But we wouldn't allow that, and you wouldn't allow that either because that's a bar?
It's, it was, but, yeah, you know, the argument there was it wasn't meant to be a bar. If, I'm not going to let you work at a bar, it's a golf course, that was a benefit, if they would have contracted. What happens is the shrine, the shrine may contract as far as a wedding party, they would like to have a deputy there. Or some other place. And so we provide that service at a much lower rate. But I thi, I, I just think what it is, is the entity pays for the cost, and it doesn't come out of our budget. It doesn't cost us anything. And, uh, and lastly, I think this, and it, with all due respect, with all due respect, we all run for different offices. And I believe in the autonomy of the elected official. And I believe in the autonomy of that. It's the office of sheriff. And if something happens in Bronson, that they have a big event, and I say, I only have two or three deputies, and there's five hundred people down there for something, they're not coming to the board of supervisors asking why you didn't, they're coming to the sheriff. I...
They usually come here.
Well, if an event, they will come probably to complain that we don't have something, I agree. But they will come to the sheriff, and the sheriff's knack is on the line when he doesn't provide the coverage that's needed. And this is the most cost-effective way. I believe in community policing, and I believe in it being the most, uh, economical way of doing it. And that is by having these individuals be able to work extra duty without having us to raise our budget for overtime and those other issues. These communities need to have an extra person for events. This large construction project that's coming up, I don't have the managerial or the, all, like I talked about, all the contract, to allow them to do it, it's best that the union takes care of it. They can work it out. And guess what, if they're short, it doesn't come back on the sheriff, it comes back on them not being able to fulfill it. Keeps us out of the loop, so, questions on it?
I, I, just to clarify, so the, so your concept is in the extra, the contracts would be when your, um, deputies are not on duty, when they're off-duty?
Right.
And then the money, where does the money go into your department?
No, they're paid...
Or they're paid directly through the contract?
Right, however, uh, it would be at the discretion of me to say, you know what, we don't want anything to do with it. We will have a contract that talks about liability. That liability may is if they're working at the ballgame and they slip on the ice, and it doesn't have anything to do with making arrest powers, that the, uh, the school or whatever, insurance carrier, would pick up for that. But if, once they go to make their arrest or do their duty, then that, that's coming up on the counter, that's, that's the sheriff's. We're here to prevent problems, and I believe our presence does that.
Would that have happened regardless if they were wearing a different uniform the minute they arrested somebody? I mean, regardless of, I'm just trying to understand. They, I mean, that issue's the same regardless if they're wearing their uniform prior to the arrest and after. I mean, they still change hats, or they don't really change hats then, do they?
No, if they're...
Because they're representing themselves as a county employee.
They're certified law enforcement officer.
At the...
At a reusery.
At the shrine event or whatever?
Whatever. At Lawton Bronson, at Westwood's summer event, or wherever we have summer events.
What do they look like now? Are they doing those events now and then?
As when I took office, they went back to before that, they were wearing some security uniform. And quite frankly, I have nothing against security personnel, but I think there are far more problems. If I go up there as a security person in some security shirt and I try to tell somebody to stop, they're likely going to say, you're just a security guard. And then they say, well, you know, not really. Now I'm a deputy sheriff. So then it becomes a huge liability. This presence would stop them from happening. You're far more going to listen to somebody that's in uniform. Maybe not you, you'll listen to any of, but I mean, most people would listen.
And we heard that before. So, I mean, you're not saying anything that wasn't brought up last time when we switched the policy.
Well, and, right. And the policy, you know, and like I said, if we discuss it, is I believe the sheriff, and just as the auditor or any elected position, if you get the attorney general's opinion, which I've read, that basically the board of supervisors' role is to provide a budget, approve it. I bring it forth, you decide here or there.
So policies, in your opinion, don't apply to your...
According to that, it's not your place to set policy.
Well, I don't... I'm a security guard five days a week.
Most, most of that, in Mr. Munson, most of that's handled by the police department. You know, we, first of all, we're talking about things that we don't, we don't really have that large of extra duty work. I believe that they work an occasional dance at the Shrine Temple, once in a while at Perkins. But I'm mainly talking about, for me, when these communities contact us, for Anthem. Anthem's having a big summer event this summer, anticipating three, four thousand extra people in the community. They're going to have a street dance with a band. And some nights, we have X amount of people on. We're going to be short-staffed right now because we have people going to the academy. It's best if they're contracted off-duty, extra-duty work, and then I'm not supplanting or shortening the patrol shift. So that's, that's my concern.
Is that what's happening now? Is that you're shortchanging your patrol staff to do those events?
No. No. Because...
Dan Burmey has corn days, and it's Friday to Saturday. And you send a deputy out there, and that's a hundred miles, more than that round trip. How do you justify burning county gas to get the Dan Burmey to pay more?
Right. That's a great question. I mean, we would, we would go there if they were working extra duty, or we'd go there if they were paying the county's gas working as a deputy. Because we have to, we can no longer maintain this shortage or hope it doesn't happen attitude. That's where the liability is. So, we're going to go. We're going to go regardless. It's if I come to you and Mr. Butler and say, you know what? It's gone through the roof. Then I'm going to hear it from everybody behind me telling me how I've overspent my money, and I'm doing this in a better way.
Something interesting came in a meeting when Mark talks about gas because that's a legitimate concern. And Major Stallman threw out that the union will pay $20 a day or something to you to work off-duty.
Right.
When it comes to using cars, I disagree with both of you.
Right.
When it comes to uniform, you get uniform allowance, but that's down to the county.
Right.
So there's, there are things that can be done if the board wants to take that position.
Well, my position is, Dave, you and I just talked about it a little earlier before the meeting started. I'm not in agreement with your plan. I do believe in your community policing concept.
Right.
I believe in that. But I think that there's a different way of handling this. I don't believe that the union should be doing that administratively. I really don't. Secondly, when you bring up CF Industries and their need to have additional security, I, I think that we do have the mechanism and the structure to do that within our own operation through your department and with our county financial system to handle that kind of thing. I really do believe that. Because I think that CF is saying that I, we need this, we need this security. We're willing to pay X amount of dollars for that particular service. We can set up a 2080 agreement with them on how to do that. We could work with, or you could work with your off-duty folks for that particular service. I think that, again, everything should go through the sheriff's department. You set the contracts up with, let's say, Saturday in the park or with Anthem, where they need something there for their, for additional services. But it has to go through your department as far as contracting with these organizations for that to be done. I do not want to go back to what we were doing in the past. Because I don't think that that was an efficient system. If we pay overtime to our deputies for that, for that particular service, it will show up in the dollars that we take in from the, from the organization that needs the, that needs the service. I guess that's where I disagree with you.
Right.
I do not want it to go but be placed back into the hands of the individual or another group that really doesn't have the logistics or the mechanics to, to do it legitimately. I just don't want it to happen.
I just want to clarify. So it wasn't CF asking, it was the people that are going to help build it.
Oh, okay.
So, just because...
Well, I'm saying that if, like I say, if Saturday Park comes to you and say, listen, I need some officers to help us with this security for this particular project that Saturday. And you says, yes, I can provide that, but this is what it's going to cost you. So you sign a letter of agreement with them. And, and those costs come out of, and you, you pay those deputies to come on and do that, that responsibility.
You mean, it wouldn't be off-duty, it would be on-duty and paid at the on-duty rate? Is that what you're saying?
Absolutely. We do not subsidize whatever activity that, that the community wants. You know, if, if they, if the community needs this service and, and it's, and it's a legitimate service, then they contact the sheriff and say, listen, I need your services. And the sheriff says, this is what it will cost you for these two or three days of additional service. And a contract is signed, the money comes to the county. And then you don't have the, you don't have the pushback from the community saying, you're spending this X amount of dollars out of overtime because it's an income-out-go situation as far as that concerned. I don't like, you know, I, I don't think that another organization within our governmental system has the wherewithal to do this in a way that's going to be transparent to the entire community.
What if the sheriff did everything that you just described, but assigned the work to off-duty individuals? In other words, the sheriff runs programs, sheriff sees that these contracts are signed, sheriff sets the rate. But when it comes to actually assigning somebody by working days, if they don't assign me, if they don't assign Major Stallman, who's off duty?
Why would I want, I guess, why would I want to assign that to another organization within my organization when I have the autonomy and the authority to do it myself?
I'm not suggesting that you would assign anything to anyone. I'm saying who's going to be in your work. And the reason I bring up the question is because...
Well, I think he would assign it to someone in authority under him to administer it, to administer it. I'm not saying that you're going to do that directly.
I'm not asking for your permission. What I mean is...
I think you are, but that's...
The cop was actually going to go stand up to the bathroom. If the sheriff did everything that you just described, but assigned it to a cop who's not working that day, so that he doesn't have to charge the school an overtime rate, and instead can negotiate some other rate that makes it more attractive or...
I don't like that.
You don't like that?
No, I don't.
I, I can understand that because schools don't maybe have the money to pay the overtime, and it would become more expensive. But then I think, where does it end? I just think you start with a basketball game. Then the next contract, the lines become blurred over time on where you're working, where you're not working. If we can keep it in-house, like maybe Supervisor Boykin is suggesting, at least there's some sense of transparency or something. It just, I don't know. I'm not ready to make a decision on this today.
There's not a decision made.
Okay. All right. I'm just, I'm not ready.
Yeah, it's a discussion, and I think our, I've talked to Mr. Phillips and Mr. Lawson, and I, I believe their, our next place for this is to decide the role of sheriff and the role of elected officials.
What you're saying then, Dave, is there's got to be some clarification where our rule stops and where yours begins.
And I think that's a good idea to get clarified.
And who's going to make that decision?
Courts.
The courts?
I guess.
You may have to go there.
It's maybe a good thing going forward.
I, you know, with all due respect, that's, I think it just clarifies everything.
I think it does.
Doesn't cause any hard feelings. It's just the best for, Mr. Phillips is going to be left out of the loop.
But the reality is, is that when anything happens within the sheriff's department, whether it's under this circumstance or another circumstance, if there's suits brought, then the county has the responsibility of, of, of that, of that particular suit. It doesn't, it doesn't go to your department, and it, it comes right back to us. That's where my, my concern is.
And with respect, Mr. Boykin, it's my name on the lawsuit and the county and the deputy messed up. So, I'm willing to, to take that and to run with it. I think it's...
But then, see, we have to budget for it, we have to tax for it, and then we have to pay the legal fees no matter who that we contract with to, to defend our position, whether it's legitimate or not legitimate.
Right. And I, it, you know, that...
Which would be really county policy if it applies to other departments. I mean, that's really what the issue is, I think, here.
I think that's it. I think it is, Mr. Man. I really do, is that it's the, does the sheriff, as an elected official in his office, listen to county policy or does he listen? I have my own policy and directive manual.
We should answer that.
Right.
Going forward. It would make maybe your life easier and my life.
I think it would. I think it would clarify. I think there is some case law that's going to say that I'm right, but you know what? I've been wrong before, and I can accept however it comes out. I think it just puts some clarity to everything.
But then are you willing to establish your own insurance coverage and liability and take on those responsibilities yourself when things happen within your own department?
I think that's, liability insurance comes, the county takes it on regardless. You know, we're, I think, as Mr. Phillips stated earlier, liability is if we go or we don't go. You know, for example, we can't sit at the sheriff's office and decide what call might have the most liability or not. I think it's best that we are probably in an agreement to disagree and that we can let the courts decide on who has the authority.
Do we have that discussion?
Right. Yeah. And I mean this, with all due respect, this is, this is important. There's no animosity. Not at all. I think it clarifies. Mr. Phillips is in agree? I hope.
Stayin' pretty quiet right now.
I didn't want to talk to her who's speaking so well.
We took him out of the loop now. We just thought we'd be good.
Right. Right. Yeah.
Well, one thing we do know over the past few weeks is that when there is an issue, we sign the check.
Oh, I, yeah, I've noted that. I have noted that, and it does concern. You bet.
Dennis? I'm sorry.
Well, I got a question now to that. For a suit, this is for a deputy that's been out at a private event. For the time being, are we going to follow county policy for district guard's county policy? By now, until changes, he can't really have somebody that's shrine function, guard homes. Has to be verified because if he does, he's going really against your policy. So I gotta see if, right, maybe he's going to court and figure it out. But right now, what do you do now? Do we follow county policy in place now?
Dave and I had that discussion as well. And really, he is supposed to follow county policy. If he chooses not to do that, he does that in his own care of his own.
A little question mark. There's some question marks there too. Because county has lib, liability. And if he's doing that, which maybe he is right, that should go through overtime through the county, and the county ought to be reimbursed. Now take, as I've heard, say, $28 and put it in their pocket when they're using our property. That's not right. Just they're going through overtime. Then they're actually maybe going to make more money with overtime rates than playing.
That's a discussion we really don't need to get into, probably shouldn't get into. Because I think it's going to go to the courts to resolve who's right and who's wrong. And we go forward and...
What does it do as time be though?
Well, let me, before you leave, Sheriff, it would be my preference, of course, and everyone else, I'm sure, not to go to court, to work together on this. And probably it's not going to be, it'll have to be a compromise on both parts. But if that, but I do, I'm just going to say, I think county board sets policy for the entire county. With that said, I still think there's compromise that can be made, but if, if, I guess that doesn't suffice, then we all, at the end of the day, have to do what we have to do.
Right. I totally agree. I...
My offer to compromise, I thought it was legitimate. What? And administratively, I think it, it works. Because I think that we have the mechanisms within our own county government here and in the sheriff's department to make that work. But to allow various individuals within a department to establish their own policy for themselves, I don't, I, I, I can't, I can't, I can't go along with that.
Oh, and I agree, Mr. Boykin. They would not set, they would have to fall under the sheriff's direction. I would, once again, decide what is, someone can work off-duty, extra-duty or not. And they follow under policy and directive manual that the sheriff's had, that I have set.
To me, I think that there's another compromise in this to match the subsidy policy procedures that they use, which is no cars, they can use uniforms, no bars. I don't know what that's...
Do they use the uniform? I don't even know truly what it is.
They do use...
They don't just be a lot of, yeah.
And I don't know if theirs is right.
I don't either, except it would be a uniform.
Well, that ends the discussion for now.
Thanks. No, seriously.
We can get together and propose to resolve the issue and bring it back.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we now reach, is there any public input or any questions?
Jim, you're awfully quiet. Never mind.
We stand adjourned.
We're adjourned, there's no other items.